Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 22 Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the covid nineteen pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television DATV and will be posted on the county's website. At www.mcohio.org for guidelines approved by House Bill one ninety seven and extended by House Bill four oh four. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Laborman.
Here.
Commissioner Dodge.
Here. County Engineer Paul.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have several resolutions today. The first is Resolution twenty one six ninety two. To submit a local broad bridge program funding application to the County Engineers Association of Ohio. For the Wagner Ford Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project in Harrison Township. Six ninety three is to revise the primary face speed limit on lower Miami's bird road. From Butter Street to Jamaica Road in German Township. In accordance with section forty five eleven point two one of the Ohio Revised Code. And we have two two resolutions for road closings for pipe replacements. The first is six ninety four for Union Road between Farmersville as Carlton Pike and Barrett Creek Road. Lasting approximately two days. And six ninety five is for Anthony Road between Baden Road and Kiefer Road lasting approximately four days.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court Brian.
Thank you Commissioners. We have one resolution for your consideration today Resolution number two one zero six nine six. Authorizing agreement with Ohio State University to collect, enter, analyze. And report data for the family treatment diversion program. In an amount not to exceed eighty five hundred dollars through September thirtieth two thousand twenty one.
I'm in for approval.
A second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you Commissioners. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab. We have Resolution six ninety seven. FY twenty twenty one Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant Program. In the amount of forty seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy seven cents. We also have Resolution six ninety eight FY twenty twenty one Research and Development. In forensic science for criminal justice purposes grant. In the amount of three hundred and twenty nine thousand one hundred and fifty six. And Resolution six ninety nine FY twenty twenty one DNA capacity enhancement. For backlog reduction program in the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty six.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
County Coroner.
Under the county coroner, we have Resolution seven hundred. Apply for a grant from the US Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs. For the FY twenty twenty one strengthening the medical examiner coroner system program. Purpose area one forensic pathology fellowships in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm in for approval. I second.
All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the county administrator under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on Jane on June fifteenth twenty twenty one. Resolution seven oh one approval bills and Resolution seven oh two approval travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the court's office.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Administrative Services Tyler.
Good afternoon Commissioners. We have a large number of resolutions for your consideration today. Beginning with Resolution seven oh three, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. Next is seven oh four. This is to authorize the dispersment of funds from the Treasurers Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection. Also known as DTAC Fund to the Montgomery County Land Realization Corporation in an amount not to exceed nine hundred five thousand two hundred one dollars and ten cents. Seven oh five solicits bids for the Ford F three fifty body uplift materials and installation services for the Engineers Department. Seven oh six solicits proposals for compensation study for the Human Resources Department. Seven oh seven selects the bid and authorizes an agreement with RL Fender Construction Company Incorporated, General Contractor. For the rival building OSI suite fifty two hundred renovation project. Also known as strategic initiatives. At their lowest and best a bid of two hundred twenty two thousand five hundred thirty three dollars through November thirtieth of twenty twenty two. The next four resolutions authorize agreements. The first is seven oh eight with clothes that work to provide interview appropriate clothing and accessories. Personalized coaching sessions and work clothing for clients of the Office of Reentry and the Fatherhood Initiative in the in an amount not to exceed. One thousand nine hundred fifty dollars through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. Seven oh nine is with IMED for vision care benefits for enrolled employees and their dependents through December thirty first of twenty twenty two with options to renew. Seven ten is with World Risk Management to provide consultant and advisory services for the property and liability third party administration claims program. For the risk, safety and emergency management department in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars through April nineteenth of twenty twenty two. Seven eleven is with World Risk Management to provide consultant and advisory services for the property casualty insurance programs for the risk, safety and emergency. Management Department in an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars through April nineteenth of twenty twenty two. The last two resolutions extend price agreements for the Environmental Services Department through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Seven twelve with Barrett paving materials incorporated for crushed stone, sand and gravel. And seven thirteen with Barrett paving materials for crushed stone and gravel. The first one was for aggregate. This one is for asphalt.
I'm in for approval. I second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Environmental Services Matt.
Good afternoon Commissioners. We've got Resolution seven fourteen to authorize an agreement with Outdoor Enterprise LLC. For construction of the Sheldon Water Main Replacement Project. At their lowest and best bid of six hundred and forty eight thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars through December thirty first twenty twenty two. Following to our to amend agreements, the first is seven fifteen with American Structure Point Incorporated for preparation of detailed construction plans. And specifications for the Stillwater Lift Station Replacement Project. By adding two hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars to the original amount for revised total of eight hundred and fifty two thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And extending the date through November thirtieth twenty twenty three. And seven sixteen with Outdoor Enterprise LLC for construction of the Cynthia Water Main Replacement Project by adding thirty thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars. To the original mount for a revised total of three hundred and ninety two thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars. And the following two are to issue requests for qualifications. First is seven seventeen consultant services for the Walnut Grove Tank Rehabilitation Project. And seven eighteen professional design services for the Woodman Dorothy Siphon Project.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Human Services.
Thank you Commissioners. Under Human Services, under Human Services Planning and Development, we have Resolution seven one nine authorizing a delegation of activities agreement. With Saint Vincent de Paul for covid nineteen emergency shelter response activities. Operations and improvements in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand. Of FY two thousand nineteen ESG CV funds through December thirty first twenty twenty one. We have to amend agreements. Resolution seven twenty Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disability Services for early intervention services. By adding four thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty seven cents to the original amount. For revised total of not to exceed one hundred and eighty eight thousand. Eight hundred and forty eight and seventeen cents for state fiscal year twenty twenty one. We also have Resolution seven twenty one Dakota Center Inc. For senior services as part of the Golden Ager's Program. And in amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred through June thirtieth twenty twenty two. Under the Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution seven twenty two. Authorizing the transfer of kinship caregiver program funds. From the Family Assistance Division to the Children's Services Division for calendar year twenty twenty one. We also have Resolution seven twenty three authorizing an agreement with Sinclair Community College. To provide support to the Fast Forward Center under the Out of School Youth Initiative. For Prevention, Retention and Continency PRC eligible families in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand. Through June thirtieth twenty twenty two. We also have two authorization agreements for substitute care services through March thirty first twenty twenty two. Resolution seven twenty four Reflections Group Home LLC. And Resolution seven twenty five Adonis Haven of Rest LLC.
I'm in for approval. I second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Business Services Chris.
Thank you Commissioner. Under Workforce Development seven twenty six. Authorizing agreement with JOG Miami Valley Doing Business as Yes for Youth. To provide in school and out of school employment and training services in amount not to exceed. Five hundred thousand dollars through June thirtieth twenty twenty two. Under Community and Economic Development, we have seven twenty seven. Approve the issuance of tax exempt revenue bonds by Dayton Metropolitan Housing Authority. Zero seven two eight authorizes. A delegation of activities agreement with Miami Township for the Community Parks Accessibility Enhancements Project. Phase two in amount not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred forty five dollars of community development block grant CDPG funds through March. Thirty first twenty twenty two and zero seven twenty nine appoint. I'm sorry. That's it.
Yeah, all right. You're you're on my space now.
Sorry Commissioner.
I I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Under County Commissioners twenty one dash oh seven two nine appoint Maha Kashini. As the Joint Treasurers and Commissioners Appointment to the Investment Advisory Committee through June twenty second twenty twenty three.
I'm in for approval. I second.
All those in favor. Aye. Next, we have a hearing on the Lamb Road Improvement Project. County Engineer Mr. Paul.
Yes, good afternoon Commissioners. We need to need to have Ward swear everyone in who plans to testify.
Afternoon everybody. Emily, do we have any citizens who have indicated they'd be present?
No, we did not.
All right. At this time then, Mr. Gruner, Mr. Dickey, if you gentlemen would raise your right hands please. Do you swear affirm the testimony? Your guilt be the truth, the whole truth, and method about the truth. So help me God.
I do.
Very good sir. Thank you.
So Rex, our project manager will be doing the presentation.
There we go. Thank you very much. This is the hearing for the improvement of Lamb Road and replacement of the bridge over Holes Creek. We held the viewing last week and today is the hearing for the for this project. The project is on Lamb Road and extends from Alex Bell Road. To Bushwick Drive, distance of about three thousand feet. The the bridge over Holes Creek is located about a about a third of the way up. That distance from from Alex Bell. Now, the project consists of replacing the bridge, as I said, and the bridge will be wider. The new bridge will be widened to align with the existing curbs. On the that to line up with the road on both sides of the bridge. The bridge will also include new sidewalks because at present there are no sidewalks on the bridge. And so it'll be raised sidewalks to connect again to existing sidewalks, both sides of the bridge. And this bridge will be constructed in two phases. To allow pedestrians to continue to cross the bridge during construction. This is in a residential area, a lot of single family, a lot of multifamily homes. And and so this will allow pedestrians to not only walk to retail, commercial. District but also to get to the RTA bus route number nineteen. Because the the bus route itself will be detoured away from the bridge during construction. Also, we'll install a new traffic signal with controller at Alex Bell and Lamb at that intersection. It will have decorative mastarm poles and the streetlights on each pole. It will also reconstruct the pedestrian crossings at the intersection. Or repair deteriorated curb and sidewalk south of the bridge. Along the east side of Lamb and the north side of Alex Bell. And finally, we will resurface the pavement from Alex Bell to Bushwick. This bridge was built in nineteen fifty seven, actually as part of a road realignment project done by the county at that time. Bridge is both structurally deficient and functionally obsolete. And the picture shows some exposed. Exposed reinforcing steel and pre-stressing strands in one of the piers. It's common. To this structure and and it is continuing to deteriorate. This picture shows erosion at the footing. The footing for the one of the piers is exposed and not a good condition. So if that continued, it could really lead to undermining of the of the footing. So the properties affected. On this project. The the first one here is Eagle Ridge Apartments just need a a small temporary easement. To construct the new. The new sidewalk and curb ramps at the intersection Eagle Ridge Drive and and Alex Bell. And you can see there are various views of the of the intersection there at Eagle Ridge Apartments. The second. Property affected is owned by Premier Highland Park. That's where the Cobblegate Apartments are located. Although no apartment buildings are really close to the bridge. The area in blue shown there again is a temporary construction easement is temporary only to allow contractor access room to work. And pictures of the apartments and the roadway. The third parcel is owned by Michael and Christine Morgan. Pardon me, on the northwest corner of the bridge. This is again a temporary easement only temporary for construction. And this is a it's a four unit apartment building. And I think you can see in the picture on the left. A good view of how the bridge becomes much narrower or is much narrower at the. At the crossing. Over over Holes Creek. So the sidewalk coming in pedestrians actually have to walk out onto the shoulder of the bridge. To get back to sidewalk on the other side. Across the road on the northeast corner of the bridge, property owned by Kettering Medical Center. And a little bit larger temporary easement shown in blue here. Because this is where the contractor will need to get off of Lamb Road and get down into the creek to build. Construction access and a work pad across the creek. So the area in blues temporary, the area in green will be a utility easement. That will be provided for us. Utilities to. To relocate once the bridge is widened. Specifically, this will be a AT&amp;T. Telephone line that will be that AT&amp;T will push under the creek. And they'll go underground around the bridge. And again, picture of the sidewalk that has to jog out over to the shoulder of the bridge. Finally, this is. A parcel owned by Barkley Square Associates where the Barkley Square condominiums are located. The the area in the blue outline is the area where a contractor access will be needed. Although we we won't need to actually acquire an easement. From that property because easements already exist by virtue of the of the plat. Those are public easements available for use by utilities and and for. Road construction. And you see the picture of the of the condominiums on the right. Do want to mention that Montgomery County Environmental Services has. Plans to install a thirty inch water main along Lamb Road. We've been coordinating closely with with Environmental Services. And their project will occur next year. The construction will occur in twenty twenty two. So we we again, we closely coordinated this. The design of both projects, the water main will be under the pavement of Lamb Road except. It will go around the bridge. And then we'll be out of the way of bridge construction when when our project, County Engineers Project comes through in twenty twenty three. The estimated cost construction for the road and bridge construction is two and a half million. We do have a federal grant already approved. It was obtained through MVRPC to cover sixty five percent of construction costs. And we do intend then to also pursue Ohio Public Works Commission funding for the project. Schedule. Right away acquisition. Would occur. Yet this year probably up through June of next year. Expect that utility relocation work would occur in the late fall of twenty twenty two and spring of twenty three. There'll also be tree removals contract contractor access activity. Very early in twenty twenty three and then anticipate that the construction. Of the project along with the closure of the road to vehicular traffic would be April through November of twenty twenty three. I mentioned earlier the detour of our of the RTA Route nineteen. And the circles in red show where. Bus stops would be to be closed during during our project, but the. The one at Bushwick and at seven forty one. Will remain open. So that. So that pedestrians residents in the area can, if they need to, cross the bridge during construction to get to the. Intersection of Bushwick and Lamb. And finally, the the detour route for for vehicles would run along Stroop. Seven forty one to Alex Bell, back to Lamb Road. Of course, you know, we will continue to maintain traffic access to all the properties along Lamb during construction, but. Vehicles will not be able to cross. Cross the bridge in for that time during twenty twenty three. With that. Are there any questions?
I I move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience and welfare for the. Traveling public requires the Lamb Road Improvement Project in Miami Township. And recognize that it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement. And maintenance of an uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to chapter five 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 three of the Ohio Revised Code. And authorize the county engineer to proceed with right of way negotiations.
And I will second that.
All those in favor. Aye. Aye. Thank you Rex. Thank you Paul.
Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any comments by any citizens today?
No, there are not.
Okay, okay. County Administrator.
Thank you Commissioners. Today, I'm pleased to announce Commissioners the hiring of a. We think it's going to be an excellent person to lead children's services in the future. Mr. Craig Rickett was named Associate Director of Children's Services. And over the last twenty two years, Craig has worked in intake and assessments. Ongoing services, adoptions, permanency, planning. As you can see the list, he has worked throughout Montgomery County. In his total twenty nine years in child welfare. So we think Commissioners. We believe very strongly that we've got the right person for the job and the experience for the job. I'm pleased that we've selected someone. With collaborations with groups across the state. To improve child welfare. He's also worked with local law enforcement, medical professionals, the prosecutor's office. And he's been a supervisor at Carehouse. Where he shared numerous development of action plans around the most severe cases of child abuse and neglect. Our search has been going on for a number of months, as you know Commissioners. But I think JFS Director Michelle Niedermeyer and her interview team found the right person for this job. I'd also like to extend my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to Debbie Shaw. Who guided the organization and led us as interim director for several months, almost a year. And Debbie, if you're listening or if you're watching this tape, the stability that you have provided. For our children in this county is greatly appreciated. I want to thank you Debbie and best of luck to Craig in this new chapter in your career. And I know that you'll do a great job for us. So thank you very much.
Welcome Craig. So, speaking of new jobs. With the pandemic unemployment assistance. Ends this Friday was that unemployment assistance that. Was put into place a year ago. We want everyone to know that our workforce development team is ready. And available to work with anyone that's searching for a job. Our staff can help you every step of the way from building your resume and preparing you for an interview. If you know of anyone who is looking for work, we are here to ensure all of our residents get employment assistance. So I'm going to give a number. Of course, you can look this up, but please call nine three seven two two five five six two seven or visit. I'm looking at that one. It's a little bit different. No, it is it. Thejobcenter.org and then. An additional thing is what you're seeing right now. Our workforce development department is hosting a virtual job fair tomorrow. And that will be tomorrow, Wednesday, June twenty third from twelve to four. And you can register right there on thejobcenter.org slash jobfair or. Take a picture of that and it will take you right to it. That QR code. So. You can see some of the companies that are attending and those are some pretty heavy hitters in the region. They're they're looking for. Employees and we know and you can drive down the street and see so many places are looking. For workers, but these are some great employers. And around seventy of those businesses will be recruiting at this event. So this is a great opportunity to meet representatives that are hiring for these open positions and. As you saw, there are employers from many different industries. So if you know anyone interested or you're interested. We have a list of the companies that are attending and a link to register again at thejobcenter.org. Slash forward slash job fair. So. You know, it's a little bit different being virtual. Hopefully, our next job fair will be live and in person. But I encourage everybody to jump on there because those jobs are good jobs. So thank you.
Absolutely, and I'm excited to give everybody an update on our Employment Opportunity Center. Out at West Town Shopping Center. As you know, construction is well underway. And the drywall is now being installed and the interior is really starting to take shape. And as you know, we're all very excited about this investment in West Dayton. And we're going to be able to bring our services to that area. So going to where people are making it. Much easier to access services they need so that they can have a. Much easier to access services they need so that they can have a better future, so. Pretty darn exciting to see this work underway. The new center will be a place for our residents to get help with their job search. Get funding for training and even train on that particular site so they don't have to come all the way down to the job center. Through a partnership with Sinclair, they will be offering I T classes at that site. At the Employment Opportunity Center and the Miami Valley C T C will be providing their aspire program. For workforce training and high school equivalency certifications. And I know we keep talking about this from time to time, but it's such an exciting project and it's. Very encouraging to see it coming to life step by step, so it won't be long now. Until we'll be able to open it up to the public and really. Increase the amount of opportunities in our western part of the county, so pretty cool.
Yeah, that's great news. Last Saturday, the three of, well, actually. Commissioner Lieberman, Commissioner Rice, Michael Colbert and I were on the stage welcoming. The performance of the tank and the Bangus, I believe they're called, and that was at Levitt Pavilion. And it was a great, great event and we were so pleased to be able to welcome our county employees and their families. To join us for the wonderful celebration and performance by that group. It, the, it came two days after President Biden declared Juneteenth a federal holiday. So we, we were able to recognize that and have a great celebration that night, so. And it was, the weather was perfect, we couldn't have had a better evening and it was wall to wall people, so we had a great time that night. So we're glad everybody was able to join us and. Thank our employees for all the hard work that they've done before the pandemic, during the pandemic and now after the pandemic, so a good time, I think, was had by all. So thank you. And our next meeting, I can't believe this, June twenty ninth, are you kidding? It's going so fast. Anyway, our next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty ninth at one thirty.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor.
Have a great week.
Thanks.